To order?
Yeah, usually it's on the board chair.
Please stand for the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I even skipped ahead. All right. All right, well entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, and um, any discussion?
Um, I believe we were gonna move the band in front.
I think we, it is there now.
Is it there now?
They moved it up already.
No, it's, you could, it's not.
No, it's not.
Oh, above the student board comments?
Yep.
Okay, that's a comment, I'm sorry. Um, okay, well-
So that's, you're recommending to make an amendment to the agenda?
Yeah, to the amendment, recommending an amendment to the agenda to move the jazz band to go first.
Can you guys speak up? We can't hear you back here.
Making amendment to the agenda to move the jazz band up to the beginning of our agenda?
And that would be after public comments and before the student board comments?
Correct.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? Okay, then um, do you have to retract that?
You have to vote on that amendment.
Okay, and all for the amendment signified by saying aye? Do we start with the students on this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I start with the students?
Aye.
Okay, and the rest?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, and all opposed, not hearing any, that passes.
Now you vote on the agenda.
And now on the agenda, how do our students feel about the agenda? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
And the, the board?
Aye.
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 Aye as well, and any opposed, not hearing any, that passes as well. And we are moving here to the public comments on agenda items, and I'm just gonna read this really quick. Um, "The North Mason School Board of Directors values the opinion and input of the community. This is an opportunity for the public to offer comments regarding issues being considered by the board. On matters of the day-to-day operation of the district such as policy, curriculum, academic standards, et cetera, the public is invited and encouraged to meet with the superintendent." Um, I have a few people on the list today, and it is not something on our agenda, so normally we would direct straight to the superintendent and do this a different way, but this is an important topic, um, and so I'd like to, we would like to give each, there's three people, uh, each person one minute, um, and then after one minute, uh, you can let us know how, what you wanna let us know in one minute, and then the rest you will have to talk to the superintendent. And anything further to go on to the agenda, you guys can work that out, um, that way. So the first person I have on the list is Sam David. And come on up to the podium so we can get you in the speaker there.
So do you mind if she and I stand together since it's one minute? Monica Roy.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we can just kinda meld in here.
Okay.
You wanna go first?
Yeah, so, uh, we received an email about having our children being staff members at school, and that it was a liability and we would need to find a different way to have them away from the workplace. But a lot of us have children, and they go to school there, so finding another way or another avenue to do that is very expensive. Our kids stay in our classroom, we get our work done, we go anywhere from an hour before school starts to get stuff done to make sure that we can complete our job in a timely manner. So, we're kinda, I don't know, flabbergasted at the fact that we received this, even though it deals with next year. Um, it is a little concerning and a little bit upsetting, um, being a parent and working for the school district for about six years now. Um, and we have a lot of members that have families, and asking them for a new cost when we give so much already is very unexpected of it. And we did do a survey from our staff members, and there is a lot of members that are concerned about it, and would have to find another place to work, and they wouldn't be able to work here for North Mason anymore. And it kinda ruins the rapture that we have with our community and the relationships we have built with families. And it also lets us know that, um, that we don't feel as valued here in the community by saying that, so.
Um, I'll take over from here. We did a survey, um, I'm gonna go along with what Monica says. It definitely makes us feel very undervalued, underappreciated. We spend hours upon hours upon hours outside of our contract time working on report cards, conferences, disciplinary actions, um, correcting papers, everything, and our, our children are part of that. Our children, our own offspring, guess what, in the morning when I'm there an hour early, my son is with me. When I'm there an hour afterwards, my daughter is there with me. It, it, they are there because we are a choice transfer. We live in other school districts, and they have been going to Belfair Elementary their entire school career. So what that would mean for many of our teachers is that we would have to pull our children from these districts and put them in the district that they belong. So my children would have to leave, if I was gonna stay here at Belfair Elementary and work, my children would have to leave Belfair Elementary and Hawkins, not Hawkins, it will be Hawkins, and the high school, and they would have to go to Pioneer School District because of this taking place. What is being asked of us is to spend almost a thousand dollars a month for our children to be watched when they can come into the classroom or come into the school and become volunteers. Children volunteers are not a bad thing. Children and student volunteers are an amazing thing, and they're an asset to our school and to our school district. Um, they learn from it, they teach other children from it, there is a plethora of things that our children can come in and do. And what we propose is that there is some sort of, um, volunteer program where they can come in before or after school, and one of us, I would run it, I don't care, um, and we would have tasks for these children to do. They could be in a different classroom even, so I'm not, I'm not supervising my own child, I'm supervising somebody else's. But there needs to be some sort of agreement because we are feeling so undervalued, and it's making us worry about our longevity in this district. And we come to this district because we love it, because it's supposed to be a community, because we are a big family. And at this point, what's happening is the family's being ripped apart, and we're saying, hey, everybody else's kids matter, but mm, sorry, yours, we can't trust them enough to be here for that amount of time. And that's the way that it feels to us. And so, you know, there are many proposals that we can make, as far as liability waivers, if that is a problem. I've been, um, led to know that that's a concern. There could also be, like I said, the volunteer program that we can implement. But there are ways to work around this instead of saying, your kids cannot come to school before or after. There are ways to work around, and what we would like to do as a staff is to find that workaround.
Great.
We would like, instead of it being cut and dry, we don't wanna walk through it, we wanna work around it and work together.
And thank you for that, and those are some details that we can, um, pass over, and when you get to meet with Deanna, you guys will be able to work those, uh, through. And then, um, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's an important topic. Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. And Beth?
Okay, I'm P, I'm here to speak of past practices, um, I've been in this school district-
Could you say your name?
Beth Shoemaker.
Okay.
I've been in this school district for forty years, my children graduated from North Mason High School, my two youngest children, and you can, this is very emotional to me because I feel like my colleagues have just been kicked in the teeth because we work so hard. I got to school at seven-thirty every morning because my kids were in the high school, middle school. I worked that hour with my other two children in my classroom. I left at five-thirty at night because my kids were busy, but I was working and my children were there. Had I had to go get them out of daycare, my daycare was in Sand Hill School District, and I work in Belfair School District, I would've had to leave on time. I would've lost all that preparation time, and I needed the preparation time, it made me a good teacher. And by not being able to have my children in the classroom, I would not have been the teacher that, I mean, even if I wasn't amazing, which of course I think I am, but even if I wasn't, I, I totally couldn't have been as good as I possibly could be without that time. And my children walked in the classroom, they walked to the back of the room, they sat down, they did their homework. If they were at school because they were at Belfair Elementary, they cleaned up their mess before they went to class because that's what you do, that's what I'd have my students do. I've never treated my children any different than I've treated my students. I had my youngest daughter in my math class, I've had my grandchildren, I've had my nieces and my nephews in my classes. And nobody besides the fact that some of them have the same last name as me would know that we're related. But I am also, by marriage, related to half the people in this community, so I'm gonna have relatives in my class. And the fact that, like they said, our children are not being valued. This has happened before, it lasted for about two months because it wasn't what was best for our students, our children, because the teachers, they need peace of mind, they need to know that they are valued, and they need to know exactly where their kids are. And that, I believe it happened when, um, the YMCA first came in, and yeah, you have to send your kids to the Y. Well, that wasn't necessarily the best place for them. Our classrooms were safer for them because they had more supervision with us than they did there. Our kids don't run around, and if there is a problem with the child running around, I went to my principal. He shut the school down for the couple of months, I went to him and I said, why? He said, well, you know, um, what are, what are the parents thinking? I don't think most of the parents ever knew that my kids were in my classroom, unless they were volunteering. I don't think their kids ever went home and told them that my kids were in my classroom because my kids were doing what they were supposed to do. And if they walked in the classroom, my class was thrilled. Hi Jenna, hi! My daughter could get them to do things that I could not, I even dream of getting them to do. They loved her, they loved my children because they were kids, and they could relate to them. They worked with other people's kids, they supervised kids, what, back in the day when we could have overnight stays at the elementary school. It was my kids that were supervising those kids at the over, overnight stays.
Yeah.
It is, and, and, I-
And I, and I hate to cut you-
That's fine, I just-
-on that, but thank you very much for bringing this, and all three of you, and I know there's more of you. So, um, definitely set up, uh, with Jackie, um, with, um, putting together that meeting. Thank you so much, you guys. Okay, and we are on to the, to, no, we're moving the Hawkins, uh, we get to hear some music here. Uh, presentation from Hawkins Middle School.
So, um, I wanted to just share one of the really great things that have come out of Hawkins this year, and that's the creation of our morning jazz band club. These are all students that get there before school, um, parents drop them off just because they love the music program so much, they wanted to continue it and, and do jazz. And so, um, but I want you to hear this from the kids, because they're the ones that are being impacted the most. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Frost and his team.
Awesome, uh, thank you for having us. It's a big privilege, and we appreciate the invitation to be here. Um, so we just started this fall, and so it's all new to us, but it's a lot of fun. We rehearse, uh, before school, seven AM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and we're never late. So we have fifth graders in here all the way through eighth graders. And, um, we're gonna, they prepare two songs, and then they prepare some statements about, I just give them a prompt of what their experience is like in our program. Okay, so Annie, you're gonna start us off.
Um, I'm Annie, and what's great about, what's great about band and jazz orchestras and Portman St. Ross, there's mostly about the music and how we play it. Sometimes music can distract people from their problems and give them a way to express themselves in a unique form of art, and it does that for me too.
I'm Connor.
And my name is Christian.
Our first piece is titled Serenade to Cuckoo by American jazz musician Roland Kirk.
Kirk played saxophone and flute, and Serenade to Cuckoo first appeared in nineteen sixty-five album I Talk to Spirits.
Hi, I'm the stockbroker Paul Santos, and I'm in sixth grade. Band is like another world to me, where I hear the music and sound of each instrument. How I feel about band is that it's a great experience to learn something new like an instrument, you know, and song. The feeling of the music in me that is that I forget everything in the past and focus on something new. That's why band is an amazing experience to do.
Hi, I'm Alex Snell, and I'm in sixth grade. Band is, band is more than music to me, it's passion that fills my heart with joy, it's the rhythm that keeps me moving, the melody that touch my heart, my soul, and the, and the harmony that brings people together. Band has taught me discipline, teamwork, and the power of creativity is a place where I feel accepted, inspired, and truly myself. I can't imagine my life without the incredible experiences and lifelong friendships that band has brought me. It's like a little faith.
My name is Xander.
And my name is Christian.
Our second piece is Alligator Alley.
Alligator Alley is based off the New Orleans three-two clave pattern. Thank you for having us.
This is the joy I hear every morning coming into work. The minute I open that door, I hear this in the halls.
Wow, I can't see around the corner there, uh, there's, uh, the drum, yeah, that, that's incred, you guys are all incredible. Honestly, I was not expecting the, um, when they first started, I was like, okay, they're gonna warm up a little bit, and they're just like bam, right into it. That was awesome. Thank you! Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Oh, you found the clarinet?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Thank you, team.
I unsuccessfully played the clarinet. I knew how to put a reed in, and that was about it, yeah. I was good at, um, moistening the reed. Sounds poetic, but it's not. All right, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, uh, we changed this up, so the next thing on here is the student board member comments. Who'd like to go first?
Um, I have expressed some concerns to my teachers about schedules, and, um, thinking that homeroom would be a very difficult thing every day, uh, to benefit most of the student body, because as a student that likes to do extracurriculars and have a job and be a part of all of these things, it's, makes it very hard to get our school done on a timely manner, especially when you have things before and after school. And, um, not having a built-in day to do homework every day is very hard. And when we do have homework for a homeroom, we have it once a week for thirty minutes, and it's scheduled planning for our teachers to teachers' emotions and everything that they are supposed to. And I think that, um, and when I talk to some of my teachers, I have already talked to other coworkers about it and trying to impl, implement it or bring it up, and I think it's very beneficial, and it seems like it's already being spread around by teachers.
About that, um, I have, due to me having a bunch of my graduation requirements met, I have a, I've been peer tutoring third period, which get, which most days does give me basically a free period to work on my work. And, um, in my liter, AP literature class gave me the option to just, instead of reading at home or needing to take time out of like from work, I could read it at school and still be caught up. I have my fellow peers that are, we are already working on our essay, and some of my, um, students in my class aren't even halfway done with the book because they've had stuff going on at home, and don't have time during the day to do it. And it's ve, and it does put them in a very unfortunate circumstance with their course load, and I do understand how, uh, built-in homeroom every day would be beneficial for those students. Um, the last thing I would like to say is, uh, starting in early or late January, we've had Winter Guard perform at a bunch of our hu, um, basketball games, and they've started to perform at the soccer games. They, and just the progress that they've made with, most of them have brand-new students that have not participated in music or in any, like, flag-throwing sport, and they've been able to just do incredible things in such a short time. And I just love seeing it and hope that they are able to progress their skills in the future.
Very exciting.
Cool.
Thank you. Wow. Okay. And we are down to-
We're at-
And to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
All right, I will entertain, uh, thank you guys. And, um, I will entertain a motion to, to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, but also pulling out the personnel report.
And, hold on, okay, so, um, and then discussion on that, you wanna pull the personnel report?
Correct.
Correct. For a separate vote.
Okay. I'm just pulling it up so it's here. Okay, then I will entertain, uh, we need to vote on that first, right?
Vote on the consent.
Entertain a motion to pull the, um-
She, she made the motion, so.
Oh, and made the emo, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part. Um, okay, so-
You're going to entertain a motion?
I'm entertaining the motion.
Or, or, I'm sorry, they gave the motion, you're taking a vote on the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of the personnel report.
So we need to make another motion?
No, that's fine, that's what you made the motion of.
So we're making a vote, yeah.
So we need a vote.
Okay, so, um, with the students, um, voting on the consent agenda minus the personnel report, we're separate. How do you feel?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, and the rest of the board?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye, and, okay, and that's it, okay.
Now, I make a motion that we approve the personnel report. We just pulled it out so that Eric could-
Yeah, I will recuse myself for voting on the personnel report.
Thank you.
So I've made a motion to approve the personnel report?
Okay.
Entertain, or you're gonna take a vote?
And then we just take a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay, and then, uh, for our students, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, the rest of the board?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, mine and, and he is standing down for that, okay. Sorry for the confusion there.
You're getting through that, I'm just fine.
I'm back, I got backwards and my sugars are up and we're doing good. And I'm backing back up into my agenda here, sorry. All right, and now we are on to our facilities presentation.
I do just wanna highlight, you did just, um, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar as agreed between NMEA and district leadership, um, pretty much mirrors the- the twenty-four, no, what's next year? Next year's twenty-four, twenty-five, so twenty-five, twenty-six is very similar to that, um, uh, there is a, a long holiday weekend because of when Veterans Day falls in that calendar.
I noticed that, I'm very excited since that's my birthday, but just kidding.
Okay, but that's good for families because now they have two years. It is our goal to usually have that approved by April, two years ahead of time, so we're glad we got that done. And, we're up next, facilities.
Yep, and we're on to the facilities presentation.
Okay. So Joan Moore, our facilities director and construction project manager, Eric Nelson, who many of you will remember from a few years ago, are going to, Joan's going to give a presentation, and then Eric's gonna speak specifically to a part of the presentation. Joan?
So as Dana said, I'm Joan Moore, I'm the facility director, uh, and maintenance. I have a great team of maintenance, ground, and custodians. Um, they put safety first, and, uh, they take pride in ensuring we have a safe environment for our students and our staff. I want to say this year, I wanna
We can do the next slide.
Andrea? This year, we had the honor of one of our, um, custodial members, Madel Shepherd, who was nominated as a classified employee for our district, so that's pretty awesome.
Hey, that's my brother.
And that's my oldest brother. Next, okay, we have the next slide. So here's some neat, um, fun facts to go over that my department covers. Um, we have two hundred and fifty acres, we have thirty-five thousand five hundred custodial square feet that we clean, two thousand three hundred and twenty-six student FTT, FTE, excuse me, including TK and Running Start. We have thirty, three hundred and ninety-five employees, we do six schools, eight auxiliary buildings, we do thirty-nine thousand, excuse me, three hundred and ninety-six thousand total square feet of instructional space. We had, um, on December fifth, we had a survey that went out to our parents, and on physical environment, um, we got for cleanliness and maintenance, eighty percent agree or strongly agree, and thirteen percent was neutral. On physical appearance for our district, we had eighty-four percent agreed or strongly agreed, and twelve percent neutral. On physical appearance, eighty-four, excuse me, on safe and maintained schools, seventy-eight percent and six for strongly and approved, and sixteen percent neutral. I'm very proud of my staff because we really do take pride in this. On facility project updates for the year twenty-two and twenty-three school year, our new projects that year were the new domestic pumps and jockey pump at Sand Hill, we did a rehab of the foyer of the AMIC wrestling center, and we had multiple HVAC projects. We installed the Gronfos three-pump system to replace the two-pump system at Sand Hill. We also, in regards to the jockey pump, we installed to help assist our fire pump system. And we are continually replacing HVAC, uh, motors in our district at this point. Facility project updates for twenty-three, twenty-four, you can see we have a wonderful picture of Sand Hill's, excuse me, Belfair's Elementary, uh, new walkway in the front of their buildings. We did it at Sand Hill, the principal, um, picked their logos, as you can see, Belfair Elementary did, uh, BE, and Sand Hill had theirs spelled out. We went with the Milliken two-point wick system, so in the front of the building, you'll see a carpet that has waffles in it, that protects it from dirt, water, mud. When it gets into the inside of the school, this second system picks up everything. It saves time and money for cleaning and preparation for our tile that goes outside of that carpet area. We did Belfair firewall panel upgrade, which added bilingual to our system. We have our well control panel replacement on our main campus, and that was grant, grant-funded. We received a hundred and fifty thousand grant for our, uh, urgent repair, and that is for well panel controls for our well system. We received an ADA grant of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-two to do our life skill centers, and we're doing the parking lot down there. So our, uh, wheelchair students will not get stuck in the mud and gravel anymore. So we're doing a full asphalt, and we're doing, also doing a walkway that will go straight to their class. We're working with our per, our community partners, we have our North Mason School District Facility Advisory Committee, um, consists of staff and community members. Our goal is to provide strategic assistance to ensure an optimum and safe environment for our current and future students. We have safe, safe schools to, safe routes to our schools, we're working to do possible sidewalks, solve, excuse me, sidewalks to Sand Hill. For our CT programs, we have Fish Pen Project, the Case Fishery Task Force, we have North Mason Regional Fire Authority and Central Mason, we're sharing facilities, and we have our EMT program. We also in our CT program, and we forgot to add this, was Safe Boats for our maritime program. Sand Hill Parks, Sand Hill students are using our Sand Hill Park Field and with our MOU with the Park District, and they are going to be installing a new playground, so our students will be able to use that as well. And in our enrollment projection report, I'm going to turn it over to Dana, who's going to be talking about some flow analytics for us.
So it was a really big pack, board packet this, um, this week, so because of the larger report that Eric's going to go over, we included for you the full report from flow analytics, and you have a paper copy. We're just gonna talk about it very briefly this time, we'll have several more conversations when we talk about this. As you know, we have had flow analytics do some projections for us now, beginning in two thousand seventeen, so we, uh, are looking at what we can expect for enrollment growth. And last, this, went, this fall, we asked them to do an upgrade to the two thousand twenty-two report that they gave us because we saw so many projects happening in our community, and we were hearing about so many more, and, you know, with the, um, completion of the, um, Belfair bypass, or there will be additional growth in our community, so how could we better plan for the next ten years? So, well, this, um, this chart that Joan included in the report kind of gives an overview of ten-year projections from flow, starting from back in two thousand eighteen. So you can see, when we had that two thousand seventeen report on that green line, um, that is the beginning, that prior to, um, what happened with COVID, that line that you see there, that it was starting on, it was kind of, kind of stay on that line from two thousand seventeen until two thousand twenty-seven. But COVID happened, we had a decrease in enrollment, but we have since come back to the pre-COVID levels and are now creeping above that. And so what flow does is they took, take a look at birth rates, and they, they are able to get them just focused on children born to families who live in our school district. They take a look at what's happening with construction, with building permits, with all sorts of things, they do a very deep demographic study, and they came up with a high growth, medium growth, and low growth projection for our district. This is what they have done for us once in two thousand seventeen and in two thousand twenty-two, and this is an update from the two thousand twenty-two report. And so the medium growth is that green line in the middle. And if we look at that median growth line, the projection is that in two thousand, well, you can't see two thousand, uh, tw- uh, thirty-four, oh, there you can. The projection at the median growth level would be that we would grow from now until then, um, about a little over twenty percent overall students from current enrollment, counting Running Start and everything else, of just over twenty-three hundred to almost twenty-seven hundred in that middle. At the high growth, we would be at almost three thousand students as a district. At the low rate, we would be just another hundred and twenty or so students or a hundred students from now, so there will be growth. It is consistent with our previous reports that we are going to see, uh, consistent growth averaging across the three grade bands of schools. In this most current report, what is interesting and that we're going to have to keep our eye on is that we're seeing the, the highest growth at the secondary level, and a little bit flatter growth at the elementary school, though continued growth. So as Joan will talk about in this report, what that means as far as looking at, one of the things we're looking at is, um, how much extra space we would need were we to be able to replace and rebuild Belfair Elementary School. And so, um, in thi- according to the mid-range here, we would only need, or we would need six more elementary school classrooms by two thousand ten years from now.
That's the mid-range?
That's the mid-range. So, um, that is going to have to be a part of the conversation that we have further going on, and that's leads into the rest of your conversation.
So our long-range planning, we're working with the facilities committee to update our long-range plans to include the five-to-twenty-year plan. The highlights will be including the possible Belfair replacement, Sand Hill upgrades, utilities re- upgrade to meet the EUIs as per the Clean Air Act, the House Bill twelve fifty-seven, elementary school security cameras, CT enhancements, additional facilities to meet enrollment needs, and our playing fields. So this segues ways into, I would like to introduce Eric Nelson, who is currently with MTC. He was formerly with Han Line Group and was our project manager for our building of our high school and our middle school. He is, was contracted to, uh, do our building's condition assessment, because we are going to be good stewards for our facilities to obtain this BCA as the starting, this prod- uh, starting point for our site study, and that is the initial, initial stage for OSPI, for scout funding for the process of any new facilities we do in our district. Like to, Eric?
Good evening, how's everybody doing today?
Good.
I came out about, uh, again, the building condition assessments are required, one of the things required by OSPI, you can do them internally, year after year, every five years, they ask for somebody to do a, basically a third party to come in. It's a, it's a check on, on the other work, and all this information is basically stored through their asset, uh, preservation program down at OSPI. And it just gives an opportunity to look at how, what condition the buildings are in as they sit from a visual standpoint. It's like, I'm not going in running equipment to see how it runs, although I, I hear about it from Joan on occasion. But the whole idea is to, to, as you start to put all of these pieces together, your enrollment, how things are maintained, and then also you add this on, that starts you to build that road of how you can get to where you need to, to take care of those situations as you get, as you go further into, into the time, so. I didn't want, I'm not here to take a lot of time, or, and I know that you've received a big, huge packet about, probably if you print it out, probably that thick, or that thick on your, uh, on your program, but just kind of give an overall, um, real quick about, about the reports, as you see, there's two sections to it. There's a conditional rating, and it's based on if you go right down the check sheet that is provided by the state, you get excellent, good, fair, poor, and does, or in underperforming, then does not, basically it's not, non-applicable. If you look at how the system is set up, fair takes you down to in the sixty percentile, or sixty percent, so states kind of skewed the curve a little bit, to where they, they want the buildings to last longer, as long as they can, and still be in, in good condition. The second part that you have right, showed up here, is there's a low, medium, and high priority, if there was to be a failure, or, um, if there was a problem with the system, how, what kind of priority does it need to take? And as you see, as items get older, let's take a roof, for example, as a roof gets older and it starts to drop on its condition, the priority's gonna creep up because it's gonna become more and more of a problem as you get towards the end. So at some point, yes, it could be a, a very, very high priority because you haven't, because it basically is, well, it keeps your school open. So that, as you go through, it's kind of, it's, it's difficult at times because for the low, medium priority and high priorities, you have to make a little bit of a judgment call, so. Conditional ratings, again, it's, it's you, I think it goes ninety, eighty, and then s- down to seventy, below seventy, before you really even get to poor. So, again, as you look at how the projects go, each one of them is, there's a, there's a fine line, and when you read through how they want you to, to look at how it performs, you have to make kind of a call of where you're at, and sometimes that, that line is, it's right there. And again, so it's, it comes up to me, me making a call on, on which side of the line I think it falls on, so. We did every building, every facility in the district, from this building to the, uh, pump house at Sand Hill, to the nonexistent maintenance building that doesn't exist next to yours anymore, that's the one that was counted in there as, uh, doesn't, we did not need to do. In general, and I'll speak real general terms, and it's, I'm not going to tell you anything you don't know, the newer facilities are actually doing very well, because you're, you're now approaching, I want to say it's seven or eight years for the high school, then nine, ten, so they're scoring very high. I think the highest, the highest score building you had here was your concession stand because two parts for that, one, it's very new, two, it's also built to be very durable. So even though you take a lot of people walking in and out of it and using it, it doesn't show wear and tear, and that's just the way it was designed. But most of the, again, the, the school buildings, the newer ones up here on campus, were scoring in the nineties, or ninety-five and above. Where you start to see things is, of course, when you get to Belfair, in the older school building in the district, um, you start to get to Sand Hill, they're starting to show the rate. I believe Sand Hill is right now, right at thirty-five years, which is typically the life expectancy that most districts look at as far as that, how long a school, they want to see a school last. And I'll, and I'll throw in right here, real quick, to kind of add to, to Joan's comments, your maintenance staff here has done a fantastic job of keeping things in good enough shape, they're functional, they're usable, and they kept looking clean. I was impressed with some, because I'd been in a couple buildings for a while, but it's, again, you're doing everything you can to extend the life of these buildings, which is a benefit to you, it helps you do further planning, um, but there is a point where you have to start looking at how things go, so. I think if you look at, maybe I'll just, maybe I just open it up for some quick questions because I know that you've all had more than enough time to digest the hundred and forty-some page report. There's a lot of details in there that when we had the opportunity to put details in there, to explain why it was scored, I would throw in some comments, either, either a typical one that's just a pulldown menu, or I'll, or I would write it in. There are also some pictures that we could not download into this, into this graphic that are also in that file, uh, so you can kind of see if there was a picture taken specifically of what was kind of driving that element, that was sort of in the report.
I more wish there was a map of some of these buildings, because some of the buildings, I'm like, what? Is storage building one, or I actually don't know where the district kitchens are.
So, so, yeah, so if you look at, we also did some updating in that system, so the district kitchen is now what you would consider your main maintenance building, that's the old kitchen.
It's by the old, um, district office where the Boys and Girls Club is.
Okay.
That building to the right of it was the central kitchen.
Okay.
Before they moved.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we repurposed it into a ground shop.
We can, we can probably, I could probably generate a map pretty quickly, it'd be a little more precise. But I think if you look at, there's one, you know, the, um, maintenance offices where Joan's offices, there's two buildings, there's a building and then actually reuse term building a little, it hasn't been used, because again, you're looking at buildings that were here as part of the original design for the original school in sixty-three?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, okay. And it still has some services running through it, but it's not used for anything. But again, it's, it's a perfect example of how bad things can get, because it's, you can't occupy it, the roof's falling apart, the siding's falling off, and the one next to it's just a foundation. So when you look at all these buildings and try to keep them in perspective of how the system scores, it's, it gets, as you get older, it gets a little bit more difficult to, to really, the number doesn't necessarily represent exactly where you would see it, it's probably a little better.
And you were talking about, I'm, I'm visualizing it, I think I've seen this sign where you're looking at the door for the Boys and Girls Club, and it's that little building right there?
If you look at this, the, what used to be the main, the side entrance to the, to the Boys and Girls Club now.
Yeah.
Joan's office is the next one, it's the next one over.
The bigger building.
Then you have the
Oh, okay, yours is like the little wayside chapel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other one is the wayside college, it's next to it, that's
The only thing it hosts is an irrigation backflow system.
And, and so when we built that and built the kitchens zones up there, that building had to come off of our square footage of instructional, of school space, so it's, it's not counted as that anymore.
So again, as So again, as, as this is, as you further update the system, there's more information that can be added for the use of the rooms that will help you when you get to your SCAP funding. It'll, it'll actually pull up this information, see exactly how many rooms are used. But again, this was just a general overlook of, of the facilities have on site. So if there's any questions?
Do you have this in another format that would be, we'd be able to put in some filters? So like the column that has the maintenance priority, obviously it's low, and it also has a low condition rating, and I may not be as concerned that if it has a higher maintenance priority and a lower condition rating, then like if I wanted to pull that out?
Focus on, there is not a way to pull those elements out.
No, I have to like.
Yeah, you can use pink, green, or yellow highlighter. I'm sorry.
So, so this gets reported directly into an OSPI document. And at ICOS, and in order to provide a document, we kind of made PDF copies of everything in ICOS, because there's not a simple way to share that. So it makes it hard to, but yes, over time, we could get all this data into some spreadsheets that could be more workable as we start talking about what are we needing to do next.
It gives us the ease of just like visually being able to say, because you could look at all the condition ratings, and if you're focusing on what's fair or poor, but maybe that's not as high of a priority.
Right. Yeah.
If I, I did put in the report, because it's broken down basically by campus, I did put a lead, a head page in there that just put the percentage report, just to kind of, kind of so you kind of see where it was going, so it'd be a little easier than just trying to pull it out.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think these questions are good, and will help us figure out how to organize some information as we prepare for future conversations, and to share this data most effectively with community and stakeholders, and get people's input. You know, the report does clearly show that surprise that would not be a surprise to anybody in this room, that something needs to be done to replace Belfer Elementary School. So. Thank you.
But, and I'll throw on to that, but your staff has done a fantastic job with the building of that age, keeping it to that level, so.
Yeah. And, and as both Joan and Eric said, this is the first step that will have to be done for us to have those conversations and be able to move forward in that process of even starting to plan or talk about planning for a bond. So having done this condition report, and having the board accept the study and survey, is, is our first step in a very long list of steps that we have to do to, in that SCAP process.
Other questions?
No, surprised, I mean, it's, it's surprising to me to see, I thought Feller would have been, you know, I didn't know. It's really good to have this data, actually.
And, and Feller does get the benefit of just recently having work done.
Yeah.
And then, and again, when you start looking at how the reports absorb information, again, it's a visual inspection. So when you start going around, yeah, there's paint peeling on the outside, but is, is it still waterproof? Yes, so you have to look at beyond the, is, is the system working the way it's supposed to be? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Over the resolution. All right, so we do have an action item here for the resolution. And let me get back down to it.
I have a question about the enrollment.
The flow document? Page one-ten, the enrollment forecast page?
Or slide eleven, on the PowerPoint presentation that you just had? I was just, the high, middle, and low scenarios? I was just curious, does that include, especially because you said that potentially our biggest growth is secondary, does that include great view students that may afford?
It does, it does. When you, when you have a chance to get, look through the whole report, it shows you how they estimated for great view and other non-high enrollment in the district, based on historic, historic.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they are included, you know, and we are seeing growth in a great view as well in the number of kids who enroll, the percentage, the size of our great view freshman class is going up. So, and steadily, that has stayed a higher number of students over the last several years, so.
Cool.
Okay.
All right. We are moving over here to, we've got the resolution one G twenty-four, acceptance of the twenty-twenty-three study and survey report.
I make a motion that we approve resolution one G twenty-four to accept the twenty-twenty-three study and survey report as presented.
Okay, and any discussion? Not hearing any. Student board members signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the rest of the board?
Aye.
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 Aye as well, and that passes.
I, I do just want to note that we will publish the documents, you know, we publish all the board documents, but we will publish our most recent enrollment projection report in a place on the website where it's easily found and accessible for folks to look at.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we are on to the board development and linkage, and we are moving into the super and superintendent update.
So we had such a wonderful presentation from Hawkins, and an important conversation about next steps in starting to do some planning. So that is the extent of the superintendent part of the superintendent report. We're going to move right into the budget status update, and then we have some information in our monitoring reports later to discuss, so.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan King, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations here in North Mason. And I'm pleased to present the budget status report this evening. Our budget status report is through the month of February twenty-twenty-four. Beginning with our other funds, our fund balances in our Capital Projects Fund was one hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars. That's an increase of six hundred seventy-six dollars over the previous month. Our debt service fund, fund balance at the end of February was eight hundred seventy-one thousand, ninety-five dollars, an increase of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. So what was that? That was from property taxes collected, a hundred fifty-six thousand, timber taxes of thirty-four thousand, state forest, four thousand, and investments of three thousand. So that's what made up that one hundred ninety-seven thousand plus increase. Our ASB fund balance at the end of February was four hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. And in our transportation vehicle fund, the fund balance was three hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Let's look at our enrollment. Now enrollment showing here is our March enrollment. So in March, our total FTE regular was two thousand, two hundred sixty-five point nine one students. That is a decrease over the previous month of sixteen point two seven, which this time of year, we start seeing that. We do have some students that are graduating early, or people moving, and not as many moving in, that, that kind of thing. That's pretty typical, actually. And then our TTK enrollment for March was thirty-two students, that remained the same as the previous month. Total enrollment between the two was two thousand, two hundred ninety-seven point nine one students. And our average through the year so far is two thousand, two hundred seventy-five point two eight students. So let's move on to our general fund status report. And we'll begin with our revenues through February. So on the top left, it shows our total revenues, actual year-to-date. We're at forty-five point five-three percent of our budgeted revenues for the year. We projected we'd be at forty-eight point one eight, so pretty close there. From local, from local sources, our year-to-date revenues at the end of February, we're at forty-seven point two-two percent of our budgeted revenues. We projected we would be at forty-three point nine six. State revenues, actual revenues through February were forty-seven point two-five. We projected we'd be at forty-eight point six-three. And from federal sources, we were at thirty point three-seven, and we had projected we'd be at forty-eight point seven. In the table below, you can see our top ten sources of revenue. You can read those, but I'll just talk about the first few. Our apportionment is our top largest revenue source through February, with eleven thousand, four hundred ninety-eight, eleven million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-nine in apportionment, four million, three hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred seven in special purpose revenues, one million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred four in local property taxes, and one million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred forty in special purpose revenues. Let's go on to the next slide, thank you, Jackie. So this shows our budgeted revenues for the year. We had budgeted forty-two million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred eighty-seven for the year. And we are through February, halfway through the year. So we would expect that we'd be about fifty percent collected of our, of our revenues. And we're about that, in the high forties. Our projected year-to-date general fund revenues were at twenty million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy, and the actual year-to-date nineteen million, three hundred four thousand, one hundred seventy. So let's go on to our expenditures on the next slide. So our projected year-end balance, as a percent of our budgeted expenditures, is at seven point seven four percent. Total expenditures, actual year-to-date, forty-eight point eight-seven percent. And we projected we'd be at fifty point five-six. So our total expenditures are a little lower than we projected, and that's not a bad thing. Our salaries and benefits, forty-seven point eight-five percent were our actual, and we projected we'd be at forty-nine point zero five. And for basic ed, forty-six point seven-two were our actual expenditures. We projected we'd be at fifty-one point four-five. Our top ten expenditures by program year-to-date include basic education at nine point six million, district-wide support at three point two million, special ed supplemental state at two point four seven million, transportation at one point one five six million, and ALA at nine hundred fourteen thousand, eight ninety-four. Those are just some, you can see the rest there, but that gives you an idea of where our top sources, our, our top expenditures are by program. Let's go on to the next slide. So our budgeted general fund expenditures showing on the left there in blue are forty-two million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred eighty-three. So that's our budget. Our projected year-to-date general fund expenditures, twenty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-nine, twenty-one million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-six, which is a little over half of what we budgeted, so that's what we projected. Our current year-to-date expenditures were at twenty million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred ten. So that's a little under half. So are we staying within our budget? Yes, if you look at this, we're halfway through the year, we've spent a little under half of our budgeted, expected expenditures. So we're in, that shows that we're staying on track to stay within budget. So let's go to the next slide, please. This shows our month-end balances in our general fund across the year. So in February, our month-end fund balance in the general fund was two million, six hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-five. Everything to the left of February were actual. If you look at that solid line, those are actual fund balances at the end of each month. And everything from March going through August are projected. Now you can see that dip in June, but if you remember, our fund, our apportionment, which affects our fund balance, dips down pretty low in May and June. So in May, we'd get a five percent apportionment, and June a six percent. And then in July and August, we get twenty-two percent of our annual apportionment in those two months. We get twelve point five percent in July and ten percent in August. So that's why you see that increase there in those last two months. So our budgeted year-end fund balance is three point seven million. And based on today's scenario, we're projected to have three point, three one seven million, or three point three one eight million, based on today's figures. So looking at past year's trends, though, we have seen that the projection at this point in time in the year is a little lower than our actual, so we're going to work towards that and see how it goes, but I'm feeling optimistic. Okay, on the last slide, we have a summary. So I like to look at our current year-to-date total revenue compared to last year. So our total revenue through February, again, nineteen million, three hundred four thousand, one hundred seventy, that was forty-five point five-three percent of what we budgeted. And our total expenditures year-to-date, twenty million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred ten, that was forty-nine point three-three percent of what we budgeted. And so considering we're halfway through the year, it looks like we're staying right on track. Some of these numbers are a little less, but the main thing is that our expenditures are staying within our budget. Our fund balance, again, at the end of February was, and you can see it there at the very bottom, in the right table, two million, six hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. And that is our general fund fund balance at the end of February. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Does Arla, Arla, do you have?
Arla, we're to Legislative Representative Report.
Yeah. I don't have a long report here, I was just going to give a little bit of a summary on some of the bills that, this is from a, an email I got last week. And so these are a series of bills that are making their way, or have already by now made their way to the governor, related to education. So we did see, you know, some gains. ESHB twenty-four ninety-four increased some state funding for operating costs in schools. The House Bill twenty-one eighty-eight did increase the special education enrollment funding cap. This one was interesting, SJM eight zero zero seven, I hadn't been tracking that one, requesting Congress to fully fund forty percent of the costs of IDEA. I thought that was interesting. And some other safety-related bills, related to fentanyl, substance use prevention, and CTE projects, and whatnot. Do you have anything?
No, I think those are all really good ones to highlight. You know, they are, the fentanyl one is going to require schools to do like North Mason already has, and provide Narcan in all sites, so that it's readily accessible to students or other community members, families that might need it. So we're pretty excited that, that that is going to hopefully also be a little bit more funding for that. Probably not enough, but a little bit more. And it is also positive that the legislature did the resolution to talk to Congress about fully funding the federal portion of special education. And now if we can just work with our legislature to fully fund their commitment
Right.
to fund schools, we'll, we'll, we keep moving forward. But we did see a little movement, not what we really wanted to see. But we're, we're down to forty-three percent of the overall operating budget. In nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, education was just over fifty-two percent. So we are the paramount duty, the number-one thing that the state constitution says our state legislators are supposed to take care of, and we're dropping in importance. And, and you know, as, as an education community, we realize that there are some other important priorities in our state, mental health across the state, and, and other things that were targeted are super important. But we need to serve our kids first, and that will also help us with a lot of those areas. So I know that for WASA, who I sit on the Legislative Committee, as you do, for WASDA, we are actually taking a much more aggressive approach to next session. We have already drafted our legislative agenda. The board is meeting this week to approve it, and we're going to get out there with our legislators right away, and also with Reichdahl's office about, these are the things that we believe are important to help us make sure our teachers and our staff have what they need to be able to meet the needs of kids now. And so, it should be an interesting next, yeah, off-season, so to speak.
That is all. Thank you very much. And on to our monitoring report of the assurance and organizational performance and policy review. We have just a little, this is from last time, but Dana has added some information, some data and charts to last month's ER twelve for some information, did you want to?
Sure, board members requested a little bit more information, and so we did have, actually have quite a lot more information, but we put together some of the charts that represent the district as a whole, and Kyle and Chris can talk about that, and we'll pull those up on that, those last few pages of the ER twelve updated report, Jackie. Starting on the bottom of the second page. So we provided a district summary specific to disaggregated data for discipline for students. And as you can see from the report in our dis, as a district, males are almost twice the rate of females at risk of receiving discipline, and twen, and twice as likely to be suspended. Free and reduced, students who are sus, is fifty percent of discipline and are free and reduced rate, if we were actually, you know, we still report it, is forty-seven percent. Nineteen percent of non-ML students have at least one major incident, as opposed to twenty percent of ML or multilingual students. Students with disabilities are at a thirty percent higher risk overall of receiving discipline and two point one times more likely to be suspended. Students of color other than Hispanic have a greater risk of receiving discipline. Black students are almost twice as likely to be suspended, but then you also have to look at the N number, so we have very few black students, so if, you know, out of, I'm, I don't have the exact number memorized, but say we had ten, as opposed to a thousand of a different group, then you'd have to have, five of those ten could be suspended, but it'd have to be five hundred of that bigger group, so those N sizes really impact those percentages. However, those percentages still exist, and we are taking them seriously. And there is some additional data by ethnicity that's included in the report. These are overall numbers, and the district looked at the individual information with the building leadership, building principals. They are bringing that back to their leadership to do some additional figuring out of plans of how they're going to address, and bring those more in line so that the subgroups are more in line with the overall population. As you get towards the bottom, you know, four percent, four point six percent of white students and four point two percent of students of color have been suspended. So those numbers are close, but there's still some places that of concern, as you can see in those summary numbers, so Chris, Kyle, do you have more to?
I think our, the biggest concern that we saw from the numbers is male versus female. That's the biggest discrepancy that we see, but so like for the very last statistic, four point six and four point two, a lot of our N counts were very low for like our native students, multiracial, so we put them all in one category and just compared it against white, and then it comes out pretty balanced on that, so, but different schools were at different spots, and this is district over wide, but our biggest discrepancy is males versus females, and then special education students.
And then we look at this data multiple times during the year, you caught us on one of them, and we work with the principals, they report out on their data and what steps they are taking, and so they're in the process of bringing that information back to our leadership meetings to talk about.
So, yeah, and one thing that Kyle was going to mention, but I got up here before he did, is if you look back at, what, eighteen, nineteen? About fifteen percent of our special education students had received discipline, suspension, and now we're sitting at, was it five percent?
We're at this year. Eight percent.
Eight percent, so it's half of what it was before, both numbers are higher than we want, but we're obviously making, moving in the right direction.
Students with disabilities, is that students with IEPs and five oh fours, or how are we defining?
IEPs.
Just IEPs?
We just count IEPs.
On that last graph, could, on page, what is that, page three, could you just help me explain? I'm looking at the graphs on the left, and then the aggregate on the right-hand side. I'm just trying to see how the students of color, how those add up to be, when I'm comparing that, it just didn't, maybe I'm just reading it wrong.
On the far right.
Oh, the percentages, yeah.
So, the way that we added that up, we took all the Hispanic, multiracial, American, Indian, and Black, we combined that all into the students of color. So when you look at the N counts, let's just say, our, our black students, if we only have four of them and two of them were suspended, you could see why it'd be fifty percent. So the percentages doesn't look like it aligns, but when we look at the total amount of students of color, which combined all four of those categories together, that's how it kind of.
Oh, so the right-hand side's not the percentage, it's the N count, is that what I'm understanding?
Oh gosh, I gotta, I can't remember. Discipline rate, no, those are, those are percentage, that's the rate of which is, but so those are the percentages, yes.
Essentially, like, these are all like averaging out to be, make it more, right?
Yeah.
This is going to hold out that, because you're, they're cool, they combine all of the races.
Into an average?
Yeah.
And there's also, there's also categories in here as well that are not shown.
It looks like two separate.
We just combined all students of color into one, because so many of them, the N counts are so little, it it, it looks weird on the.
They're two separate counts, but not split on the paper, so what we're looking at is two separate.
Two separate things, even though it's one graph, yes.
Added on top, and I'm like, it doesn't look right.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't, yeah.
So that could have been two separate graphs.
Yeah.
Thank you for explaining that.
And thank you for pointing that out, because it made me fuck. Okay, so are we done with that? There we go, okay, policy review, and this is our opportunity to discuss, propose, and/or make any revisions to the policies that we discussed last meeting, and the board reviewed these policies for compliance in its previous meeting, and this is the opportunity for the board to consider any needed changes to these recently monitored policies. So ER nine and ER twelve, is there anything for discussion on those? Those were already done last meeting.
I was just going to comment, I, I, I know we don't take too much to engage with public comment, et cetera, but I think that ER nine is an excellent exam, example how we've done a great job of increasing the outward view of the public relations, et cetera, but just based on some of the comments, I'm wondering if there might be things that we could do to, I don't want to say increase the appreciation towards the teachers, et cetera, but maybe work on things that we could take some of the lessons learned for the public realm, that outward-facing, and maybe apply some of those, and they may be being applied, I'm, I'm new to all this, but make sure we're applying those same principles to the inward-facing relations towards the teachers, so, but I think we've done a great thing, yeah.
Yeah, well said.
Yeah, definitely, yes. Okay, and any other discussion on those? Okay, not hearing any, I am down to, we are down to the adjournment phase and good of the order, board and superintendent, and I'm this time going to, I was going to start over with Arla and come this way, it's quieter down there today.
I don't think I have anything for the good of the order.
I was just going to say, I love seeing the crowd here tonight.
Yeah, isn't it awesome?
Just if, especially with the plans that we have, and the way we're trying to study and try to do things for the community, the more that we can see that involvement, the more they can see the studies for the facilities, the reports, the positive things that are happening for some of the groups, and presumably all of the groups, I think just, the more people we can get here, the better, so I just love seeing that.
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah.
When you said it was crowded, you meant.
I didn't mean you guys weren't engaging, I guess.
So thank you to the Hawkins Jazz Band, they're all gone, but that was awesome and amazing. Thank you to Monica, Sam, and Beth for sharing your points of view, your opinions, your experiences, your truths, I appreciate that. And also thank you to the, let me see if I can get this right, FCC LA teacher Heather Bracy, and students Anastasia Acker and Corbin Petty for putting together an amazing lunch that was served to other school districts' board members, the ESD superintendent, and so really, really appreciate them coming in on a Saturday and doing that.
Mine's not really good, I forgot, it's just a comment, I forgot to say it earlier, but I've seen that we've struggled with some transportation issues recently, and that's affecting multiple sports, not just softball, but soccer, boy soccer as well. And to point out that a lot of us softball girls are going to be missing school tomorrow, because we are going to have to share a bus with the baseball boys. So instead of, for a four PM game, I'm leaving school at twelve twenty.
Yes.
And that would be making me miss fourth and fifth period, and I I appreciate my time in class a lot more than being on the bus, but I'm excited for the softball game, no matter what, but
I don't have anything.
Everyone's here.
I, the, the band here was amazing and a treat tonight, and I actually envisioned myself sitting in a cafe, and it, the light is low, and they, I could hear, I could hear the sounds, you know, there was a couple of boop-boops in there, and you go, no, no, they're going to work it out, they're going to do good. And I appreciate that Nicole pointed out that we had people come and talk about issues that most of the time we see on paper, you know, so it's nice to see that you guys came and talked today, and that's very cool. And I love hearing that, that you would rather be in class. I mean, my age, not everybody loved school.
It's just hard to do homework on a bus.
Yeah, I mean, that's really good, it's, it's nice to hear, and I think that reflects a lot on our school as well, but.
Especially teachers, because I love my teachers and I would rather be in class.
That's very cool, and it speaks well of you too, because it takes, it's a two-way street there, so, thank you guys so much.
I'm good.
All right, very cool, all right, so, we have our board self-assessment being done by Nicole today.
Yes, okay, so we have all five members present, and the general meeting behavior rate as satisfactory or not satisfactory, and I would rate us as satisfactory in all categories. Did we follow the governance principles? I would say yes. And so overall, I believe that our performance today was satisfactory.
Okay. Okay, very good. And then our next board meeting day, I'm sorry, were you done talking? I'm good at not hearing quite the end, and then talking over somebody, and then be like. All right, our next board meeting is going to be on April twenty-second, right here at six-thirty in our boardroom, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting.